Good evening. My name is Taylor Kingman. We have a quorum. Ms. Arroyo is ill this evening, so she will not be with us, but we have the rest of our board team, so I will call this meeting to order. I'm going to read our script and then we will move forward with our agenda. So, good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of S A I S D. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by State law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the S A I S D Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is on our agenda or not on our agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can remove through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on a subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance, you will not be permitted to speak on that grievance as that can affect the grievance process. Also, please understand, if you offer a public comment, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since that matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of S A I S D. We're going to start doing pledges at our pre-agenda meetings, and so we're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas. Thank you all. All right, we are going to start with public comment. We have a couple people signed up. First, we have Mr. Aaron Vanoy, and his topic is Historic Overlay of the Freshman Campus.
So again, my name is Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services with the City of San Angelo. Back in February, city staff was requested to look at the potential of expanding our historic district downtown, which would encompass the main building at the freshman campus. I believe we had a meeting that was in March at the Design and Historic Review Commission. There had been not the best communication between the city and the school district, and so we kind of put the brakes on and said, well, let's have some discussions. We have not picked that item back up to move forward until coming this June, and I just wanted to make sure and bring that forward and just say that the city is going to bring forward that item to their design and historic district, which would give a recommendation to the city council on whether to do a historic designation over the main building there at the freshman campus. That meeting is scheduled slated for June 20th, and then to be heard at city council in July to see if that actually goes through. As Dr. Moran and I visited, obviously, the end of the school year is a very, very busy time, and not that he gets a break in June or anything like that, but we've had at least some discussions, and I think we'd like to meet again with him and his team to just kind of go back over any of the concerns that we can work through. Usually, a historic overlay encompasses the entire property and campus. That is not what we're wanting to do. We're looking at the main building and just doing the facade and the footprint, and so we know that there are some state rules about security and children's safety, and we want to respect that and know that that's paramount in this situation. There is just a desire from the city itself to designate that main building as a historic structure, as it was our first junior college here in the community, as y'all know, and kind of the precursor to Angelo State University. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to come to this pre-meeting. If you'd like us to do anything further, just please give us some direction, and we'll be happy to do that either at this board or just with the school staff. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have Raymond Pacetti, and his topic is STEMS.
Hello, Board of S A I S D. My name is Raymond Pacetti, and I'd like to talk about the situation at the Bowie STEM Lab. So basically, the STEM's teacher is still being rude towards us and yelling at us. One last time we went to class, she spent 93% of the class yelling at us over not respecting her, and seven, not seven, three, sorry, 97% of the class yelling at us and 3% of the class actually teaching us and doing the activity. I am disappointed in the state of the Bowie STEM Lab because, one, the teacher is not allowing us to use the equipment, and most of the time when we want to use it, she says, "Don't touch that." And, two, there's no change. I've came here constantly to these pre-agenda board meetings for two years, and I think it's disappointing that you guys will not listen to one of your own students because we have a school board to listen to the students and recognize them, and I don't think it's really okay to not listen to one of your students over something. So I ask of you guys to please improve the STEM Lab and teach our teacher to not be so rude to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Next, we have Virgil Pacetti, topic of leadership.
Well, I too have been coming for two years, and I just let you know that y'all won. So after two years, nothing's changed. Never got to let my son see what that $4.5 million would have got him at Fort Concho because I have a 32-year veteran educator sent me a note that says, "It's not in your son's best interest to know what we do over there. That's our $4.5 million. Stay in your lane." I think that if you're going to use $4.5 million of our tax money, that at a minimum, at least let me know what you do over there. Why is that so much to ask? I want to give my son the same opportunities as those kids, but no, you outweighed me. You lasted me till the end of the fifth grade, and so now you're like, "Well, go to sixth grade and assimilate. You don't need to know what we do over there." And you know, I've never had any leverage on anybody in here because y'all have all the power, y'all are never wrong, you have these fancy degrees on the wall, and I'm a mechanic, and I don't know anything, but now I look here and it says Bond Planning Services. And so now all this information that I've been collecting for the last two years, all these grievances, all these things, letting the Transportation Department get run into the ground before you noticed it, letting some guy from TLC that got fired come and run our facilities into the ground, and now we're struggling to find money to give raises, is all going to come to fruition. So when you go out there and ask for that bond, I'm going to say, "Why would we give these people money when all they're going to do is give it to the special kids, or they're going to give it to 3D Plumbing, or they're going to give it to the architect $2 million on a $20 million contract, but you're not going to do anything for the kids?" And then if you go and try to get something done, they will shut you down, they will answer those grievances with, "We've never done anything wrong, we didn't do anything wrong, and we will never do anything wrong in the future." How are you going to sit here and never admit that you've done nothing wrong? Instead of working together to say, "What can we do to make something better for the students?" Nope, firewall. So you know what? That same firewall is going to come up when that bond agenda comes up. I'm going to get with the Tea Party, I'm going to get with everybody I can find that will listen and say, "Do not give these people the money because they're going to waste it. They're not here for the kids. They're here to take pictures, they're here to look good in front of the camera, they're here to spend $400,000 on a Communication Department that tells you everything's great when it's not, and they're here to give their admin the best raises in the state. But when it comes to teachers, we don't have the money. When it comes to the students, sorry, can't have it unless you're one of the special ones that gets that $4.5 million budget."
We're going to move forward with our agenda, and we're going to conduct our Finance and Audit Committee workshop, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Dindel.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We have, first of all, we have a Management Oversight Report on Purchasing, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with that today.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Jason Henry, and I'm the Director of Purchasing. We'll go ahead and move right into my Management Oversight presentation. The first thing I'd like to always mention is our mission. The Purchasing Department's mission is to provide the procurement process and services for teachers, departments, to have all the necessary tools and resources to produce future-ready graduates. Our commitment is to student achievement and is our highest priority and core principle for all decisions that impact this district. This is my department staff. This is my favorite slide because I get to brag on all the great people that work in my department. The first person at the top of this is Kathleen Baharano. She's the secretary. She does most of the approvals as far as POs and stuff like that. She's also the most knowledgeable one in the department outside of myself, so a lot of times she is great assistance. Purchasing Coordinator and Warehouse Manager is Frank James. This is a new position. We stole Frank away from the Child Nutrition Department, and he and I worked together in the past. He's a great guy. He's got a couple kids that have graduated from the system, and he's going to be a great help over there. Kim Gadberry, she's our ray of sunshine in the Purchasing Department, which is a very odd thing to say to begin with. She answers all the phones, and she's one of the greatest ladies in the building when it comes to just having a great disposition. We also have the guys that work for us. Mail delivery is Chris Venable. Textbooks and inventory is Efren Martinez, and we also have some part-time movers that we bring on in the summer to help us move around some equipment. And Martin Banda is one of our part-time guys too, who has worked for the department for years and then retired and couldn't help it and wanted to come back, so we definitely took them with open arms. The different responsibilities that the Purchasing Department covers, we do everything that's included in the Purchasing Department, from assisting with getting quotes, vendors, putting out bids. We also do all the textbook and inventory control, capital construction projects, and then take care of all the inner-school mail deliveries as well. Who are our customers? Our most important customers are going to be our students. Those are the ones that we're trying to make sure that they have every item that they need in the education process. Next would be educators and departments, and then, of course, parents. One of the bids that I know recently I discussed with Merle was the Letterman Jacket bid, and one of the things that I wanted to make sure is that we had a clear, transparent cost on what parents have to pay, not just the district, but what the parents have to incur. And I'll be honest with you, it's a little staggering. I didn't understand all the extra costs that come in that, so we make sure we capture all that as well for the parents. And then, of course, the citizens of the city. This is a breakdown of our budget. We don't have a whole lot of expenses from our department. Most of our major expenses are tied to either projects or other people's budgets. So as you'll see, 81% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits, and then we have a little bit of small operating costs, 4%, contracted services, and then supplies and These are all the boring laws that we always point out, that these are the things that we have to abide by. We don't make these things up as we go. We're following all the state and local and federal laws as far as any purchasing for school districts go. Who do we report to? We report to you all. Every month, I come up here and I give a short report over capital projects that we have going on. We also report to T E A. Every year, we spend a nice little bit of quality time with the auditors that come in, and then, of course, we're always contacted by numerous taxpayers for different reasons, whether it's business owners or individual citizens. Training is probably one of the most important things in the Purchasing Department. This is what really makes the process smooth and keeps everybody in line and happy with going through it. Some of the training that we do, we do departmental cross-training. Last year was the first year that I had done it, but I met with all the coaches, everybody in athletics. If you're a coach in any sort of facility or anywhere in the district, they have a big meeting every year, and I went to that. It was very interesting. I learned a lot. Same thing with Fine Arts. My main goal when I go to these sort of trainings is to put myself out in front of there and make myself approachable to those people. The one thing that I've learned is that when people quit calling your office, that's when you have problems. The more contact I can make and the more comfortable I can make them feel about calling and walking them through stuff, it makes everybody's life a little bit easier. We also do a lot of campus and departmental staff training. One of the biggest things that we do every year is the People Purpose Passion Training, and that's a great thing for the district, for all the clerical staff. It's probably one of the better things I've seen come into fruition since I started. We also take a lot of TASBO courses. We participated in the TASBO Purchasing Mentoring Program, and then we also go to different academies as well. One of the different trainings that I did this year was with the Small Business Development Center, and we did a Meet the Buyer, and what that was is the city organized that, and we had lots of different vendors and contractors throughout the town in the Concho Valley that came in, and we got to stand up and explain how to go through the purchasing process and how to do business with the district. I think it was a really good training. So what do I have going on in the future? This slide almost never changes, I'll be honest with you, and that's because I think they're pretty hard, steadfast ideas that need to keep happening. Listen, 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 and train, train, train. I think those are six good things right there that all need to happen. We keep on working on vendor training, how those vendors let those vendors know how to do business with us. We also do a lot of department-specific training, like I said, athletics and Fine Arts, and I think this year we're going to try to tackle an additional little bit of travel training, as much traveling as we do on that. Are there any questions from y'all?
Any questions for Mr. Henry?
No, I just want to point out, I appreciate the work you do with the vendors. It's been a long time since we've had a bid that we don't have multiple vendors applying for, and I think that's good for the district, it's good for the taxpayers, it's good for the kids, that we have people competing to provide services, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
I will have to say, it's a team effort to get all those vendors to bid on stuff. The Maintenance Department helps out on that, Communications, and of course, the great ladies in my office.
One of the hats that you wear is our Construction Purchasing, and so we've got a Construction Update from you now, so.
Absolutely. So we're going to move right on into this. We'll start off with McGill. McGill Elementary School, we have the rooftop units are installed. They started installing those while we were over there last Wednesday for our update. They're starting to insulate the walls as well. Some of the walls already have sheet rock on them, and they're doing one side and putting in the insulation on the other side. The walk-in freezer's been installed. It's pretty sharp-looking. I've got a picture in here that actually has a window in the door, which I thought was pretty neat-looking. They've also completed all of the brick veneer on the backside of the cafeteria. They're moving really fast over there. Lee Lewis has been great to work with, and they're going to keep on moving their way around. Now that they've completed the backside of the cafeteria, they'll start going on to the side that faces the campus now, and they'll just keep working their way around. Here's a picture of that crane dropping those units onto the roof, and then there's the great-looking stainless steel walk-in freezer and refrigerator that they put in. Here's some of the, they've already started the drywall, and here's a picture of all the big hallway down the north side of that. We'll go ahead and move on into Fannin Elementary. They're also putting up all the drywall right now, one side of the interior. Rough ends continue. Mechanical and plumbing roughed in are completed. Work site, they continue to work on the work site as well, all the dirt work outside, curbing and all that. Here's a few pictures of the interior. You can see where they're adding all that insulation on the inside. This is the expanded area in the middle where the eight classrooms face each other, and it has a little bit of a bump out to make it a little bit larger for a collaborative space. And here's some of the dirt work outside. The next one, I just added this slide in here, the CHS Sousa Building. I wanted to make sure everybody knew where we're at. This picture on the left-hand side, that's from a couple weeks ago, but I wanted everybody to see what it looks like when you rip the ceiling out of one of these big buildings. One of the things that we took care of that was a little bit extra was making sure that all those dead wires, that we're not just cutting them and leaving them in the ceiling. It makes maintenance and technology, it makes it a nightmare whenever they try to go back with something. So they very meticulously went through there and removed anything that was old, anything unneeded, and pulled it out while we had everything available to us. The picture on the right side is the new bathroom that they're adding. I mean, their mid-tex is moving really quick over there. They've already got that bathroom mocked up and roughed in with all the plumbing. Next week, they're waiting on some of the metal studs. Next week, when those come, they'll start framing it all up, but they're moving right along. Are there any questions over any of these three major construction projects?
Any questions, Board?
Timeline? So how are we looking at Fannin?
Fannin, we're still looking at August opening. McGill, we're still looking at December, and then Sousa, we're moving right along. I think we're going to hit the August as well. That's what we're shooting for.
Fannin is on time, though?
Currently, yes. All of the major pieces at Fannin are all onsite, so all of the switchgear, all of the AC units, everything is onsite, so that's good.
Some good news, for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you.
Next, we have a T E A Intruder Detection Audit conducted by the Education Service Center staff, and Mr. Collinbach's going to help us with that.
Dr. Moran, Board, thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Dindel, last time you just told me to give you a thumbs up, and we have another month where two more, and then everything was fine with the two that we had. So we will still have another report in next month because we have two campuses that have not had theirs yet. So we'll have those, I guess, in the last couple weeks of school, and then we'll report on those at the next month.
Great, so far, so good, and no incidents, and that's what we're after, for sure. Another win today. Any other questions for Mr. Collinbach?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, before you move into Finance, I'm going to have Jason come back up, and we're going to have, under Construction Update, we're going to have one more update.
Absolutely. We've got one more update. It's going to be the Reagan Elementary update, and tonight we have, from SKG Engineering, we have Structural Engineer Jerry White that's going to present for us.
While Jason's passing that out, I'll go ahead and make a start. Thanks to the Board and Superintendent for having us here and letting us help with this inspection. What Jason asked us to do was to do an inspection of the underfloor space at Reagan Elementary. Reagan, as you guys know, as I understand it, it's the same age as San Jacinto, approximately 115, 17-ish years old. And you know, with a building that old, there's always, there's going to be some maintenance items and some things to look at, and Jason just wanted us to go through and help to, essentially what I did is I wanted to delineate items that we think need to be repaired and categorize those as near-future or further down the road. And while he's, there's some drawings there with some pictures, but essentially, for the near-future items, we did recognize essentially three items that... Sorry, I didn't, y'all don't really have a lot of room for those big drawings. Apologize for that.
Perfect.
There's essentially three items that we feel should be taken care of in the near future, and the way I'm thinking about near-future, I'm thinking about over the summer. That's my recommendation. If you look at the framing plan, there is an area outlined in red, and it also coordinates to the photos number one, two, and three. So what that is, is there's a retaining wall in the basement. The basement is surrounded with a retaining wall, and there's a portion of that retaining wall that's brick, and some of the brick and some of the grout is starting to deteriorate pretty bad. So that is one item that we think should be shored in the near future. Just to keep, if that brick deteriorates further, it's essentially a shield to put up that will do the work that the retaining wall is doing now. The second item is coordinating to four, five, and six in the photos, and there's also a red clouded area around it. It's more on the south side, more south from where the retaining wall, that's red. What that is, there's a sort of a mystery area under the basement that I'm not sure why it's the way it is, but there's an area sort of unretained soil below the building, in the basement, but the area's not retained. I'm thinking possibly it was a basement in the past, or it was going to be a basement. Either way, there's an area of unretained soil, and there is a column that's sitting on the corner of some of that unretained soil that, in our opinion, that soil needs to be retained so that column can stay supported like it needs to be. That's an item that I feel needs to be done in the near future. Lastly, and this is a smaller item than the other two, but it's something that should be adjusted or something to be taken care of. It's just one support. You can see photo number seven. There's a wood support there that has very little bearing, and that's just an item that I think needs to be addressed in the near future. Other than that, the items that are in the report are what we feel could be done down the road. You know, I wouldn't categorize them as maintenance, I would categorize them as repairs, but they're not as critical, in our opinion. And that is throughout the under- And that is throughout the underfloor space, there's, there's very, there's some wood supports that are leaning and unsupported and things like that that should just, you know, a contractor should go through and just not re-level, but re-shim the areas, straighten up the supports, things like that. And then if you look at the drawing, the floor, the framing plan drawing, what I'm calling the east wing. So there's, you get the main portion of the building and then the classroom wing behind it. There, under there, there's been a lot of, there's been, it didn't work under the entire school in the past. I mean, I'm sure it's, goes back from years and years, way back to maybe as recent as maybe the '08 bond that happened. I don't know the specifics on that, though, but there, there is some steel beams that have put in, been put in under the east classroom wing that you can see in the pictures. May not have the pic, but you can see there's some steel beams, sort of the last group of pictures there where there's pipe supports under them, where the pipe supports are not in contact with the beams. And what that is, the, the main beams that, that those steel beams are attached to are supported. Those steel beams were put in, best we can tell, as, as reinforcement for those beams. It's, it's those that don't seem to be supported by the, by the pipe columns that are there. So that, it just needs to be re-shimmed, just, just shim packs put under it so they're supported. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't look like any of them are severely deflected or show any signs of, you know, damage that's more alarming. It just, they're not supported as I think they were intended to be. Lastly, in the, in the, down the road type repairs, there's some drainage, I think, issues or things that could be improved around the east classroom ring. There's, you'll see there in some of the last pictures, gutter downspouts that are just draining right next to the building and have kind of eroded next to the building. That, when that kind of thing happens and water can't get away fast enough, foundation systems can tend to move around and you start seeing cracks in brittle finishes and veneers and plaster finishes like that building has. So I think just some maintenance, some improved drainage. And it could be as simple as bigger kickouts on the downspouts or splash blocks below the downspouts to help maintain a more constant moisture content of the soil around there. That's, that's the extent of the report. I hope the photos help to, you know, help you guys to see what we saw. And happy to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
You said the steel beams are run across the bottom.
Yes, sir.
Supported by the, the concrete pillars that are, I guess, floating.
No, what it, what the, the steel beams.
And then you got the little pipe.
Yes.
That you said needs to be shamed.
So the little, the little pipes, from what, the best we can tell, the little pipes are in there, were put, were in there to support the steel beams.
Okay.
The steel beams are attached to the bottom of the wood beams. The wood beams are supported by the concrete beams, the original construction. So the reinforcement is happening, but the, the, all of the support that I think was intended is not there at the moment.
The help, I guess, that little pipe is the help.
It's the help.
It's the help. I was going to ask you, would, would shifting cause those shims or keep? I'm just wondering if they had, when they did it, if it was already on there and then shifting and moving right there with these downspouts.
My, my guess is it's not, it's less shifting, it's more just settlement over time.
Just settlement.
Settlement.
Coming down.
Consolidation of the soil, yes, sir.
Any additional questions?
Well, we appreciate, you know, obviously, we had our architect come in and give us some recommendations about some facilities. And we wanted to make sure that we had recommendations from a third party that was not our architect to kind of look at what, what we needed to do and where we need to do that. And so we appreciate you coming in and helping us with that to make sure that we are doing the right things for these campuses.
Very welcome. Happy to help.
Thank you very much. With that, we can move on to our bills and accounts for April. Page nine on the balance sheet shows an unassigned fund balance right now, approximately $52,863,000. Page 12 shows our general funds revenue expenditures at this point. Total revenue so far, $90,313,000. And our expenditures are at $87,752,000. The revenues are at 70.4% collected. Still a significant amount to be collected from the state, but that's pretty normal. They, they come in at the very end and tend to make a budget whole on the back end. They tend to rely on the, the local effort, especially in December, January, and February, to carry the, to carry the weight of the budget for public schools. So anyway, our, our expenditures are at 67.2%. We're in the eighth month of our budget cycle, so that means we should be somewhere around 67% holding steady. There are a couple of things in there that are a little high, but that's about normal because we, we use those more by the end of the school year than we do in the summertime, so. There are no questions about the revenues expenditures report on page 12. Can move to page 13 through 34, which is our check register for the month, I think. Dr. Kingman has a question on one.
I just have one check number for you, Merle. 1-2-1-7-2-4-4. We can give me Friday fax is fine. Thank you.
Any other questions on the check register? If not, we can move on to page 35 and 36, which is our investment report. April 24, our investment income was $357,000 based on $85 million. And our March income was $307,000 based on a $90 million investment. The reason that, from March to April is coming down as we continue to draw down our, our, our funds to pay for our building projects that are going on right now. So the greater amount of the draw, the less investment we have at this point.
And sorry, a question on that. Merle, do you mind at some point giving us an update on where we are to year-to-date to budget for what we've budgeted for investments to come back on this year versus? I know, because I know it's kind of a moving target because of the interest rates. When we went to do our budget last year, we're just looking at, so we can look forward to the budget this coming year, how we're doing as far as interest rate, like what we're actually bringing in our investments?
It, it actually is going to be higher. When we budgeted that at $2 million interest income revenue, we had predicted that the rate would begin to fall over this year and that the two construction companies would draw down fund balance quicker than they have. And so what we see now is that it's actually gone over $3 million because they still have a large portion of that money that we've kept and not paid out yet. And they haven't dropped the rate as quickly as we thought it would. So it is much higher in interest revenue.
Always good to get that news. Thank you.
The year, year-to-year comparison is on page 36. It's an April 23 comparison to April 24. Again, April 24, $357,000 based on an $85 million investment. April 20, of April of 2023 was $341,000 based on an $88 million investment. So again, the, the proceeds continue to remain better than expected as we move forward through that. Page 37 to 39 shows our investment portfolio breakdown of all the accounts. I can't help with that either. Okay, I'm not sure whether it's a. Page 48 to 43 is a budget adjustment, removing money between some of the budget categories. Again, we'll start to see more of these adjustments as we move into the, into the, into the, of the budget cycle, June, July, August, to shore up the funds that are short and to, and to make whole the funds that are, that are lacking, so. And then page 44 shows our revenue expenditure report, including the adjustment. Again, to Dr. Brandon's note, we still have $17 million in our construction allocated funds. So still a significant amount in there, holding steady. Out of $19,240,000 is our total committed funds, with about a million of that for capital improvement projects that we've got moving, moving forward. And again, our undersigned fund balance still remains at $52,863,000. $52,860, $52,863,000. And that's on page 45. There are no questions. Page 46 is our tax collection report. Again, in, in year 2022, it shows the collection of 20, of, excuse me, of $62 million with a percentage rate of 94.79% collected at that point. Again, because of the tax reduction this past year, the 2023 collections are only $52 million. And again, about the same percentage collected at 94.41%. So the state, as they drew down our budget from the local effort, so in order to help relieve some of the, the tax burden that the local effort was providing. Any questions about that? If not, page 47 to page 50 shows our PO report. Several things, computer parts, bus repairs, some STEM robots, portable expenses related to our movement from CFC to the main campus. Some camera replacements. There's a fan and freezer to accommodate the influx of students that out to Loma. And there's some HVAC maintenance on our PO report for this month. Any questions about that? Okay, if not, that should include my finance report and you can have it back, Dr. Kingman.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go through our proposed agenda for our May 20th meeting. At which point, hopefully, both men on both sides of me will be better and I won't be sick. Our invocation, pledge allegiance, our recognitions, amendments, public comments. We will have a construction update from Mr. Henry and he will be continuing to work on the, making sure our timeline at Fannin is tight but great. Dr. Moran, are we going to do anything on Up Down Central and Oaks tonight?
There we go. The update on Oaks is currently on the proposed agenda. Only if we were going to work with the city and have more information provided to the board. The city showed up tonight, gave us information. So we'll, we'll follow up with the city following this meeting and make a determination on if there needs to be more information brought to the board. So at this point, I think we're, there's a question mark by that one.
We will leave that there and we'll work with the city on making sure we understand everything that is moving forward there. Dr. Gomez, reorganization of Department of Curriculum and Instruction.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the Board, we know that you've received information, but we wanted to give you a formal update regarding the reorganization of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction effective the 24, 25 school year. So human capital is one of the district's greatest resources. That's evident in what you hear in budgeting. And even the district's main slogan, "Our people make the difference." Teachers are the most powerful influences on learning. And more than ever, we need to support our teachers and help build teacher efficacy and just empower them in the craft of teaching for a number of reasons, from a national shortage to a state shortage and from more and more teachers coming in from alt cert programs. So one of the ways that we will do this is through the restructuring of our instructional coaches. To better support our core teaching staff district-wide and to build teacher efficacy, you will see our elementary ICs will be organized to support four separate pods of either three or four elementary schools. Each pod of elementary campuses will be supported by a reading, language arts, and a math instructional coach. And a campus instructional coach will support two pods. Currently, as you all are aware, each elementary campus has one instructional coach that covers all content areas. They are not content-specific. So this would be a change to give more content-specific support for those elementary campuses. In the area of secondary, the secondary schools would be supported by a team of instructional coaches. This has not been finalized yet, but the goal is to support those four core subject areas. And again, we're still finalizing that. Right now, as you all are aware, there are instructional coaches on the three middle schools and there are not instructional coaches on the high school campuses. Instructional coaches would be housed here, the administration building. However, most of their time will be spent out on the campuses supporting. The time would be customized depending on needs for those core areas. And then when professional learning, when meetings, those would not be just haphazard. They would be very specific to the calendar, maybe a specific day of the week. So that again, the majority of the time is spent out. There would be an academic coaching stipend given to these individuals because they will be traveling. So that would be part of their salary to meet those needs. As we have more updates, we will provide those for the supervision of those instructional coaches to meet the teaching and learning plan for the district. The elementary instructional coaches would report directly to Brooke Collinbach. The secondary instructional coaches would report directly to Matt Esquie, that's the secondary Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And Brooke Collinbach would report to Shelley Huddleston and Matt Esquie would report to Shelley Huddleston as well. All through the curriculum and instruction team. So Shelley and I are both open to answer any questions. I just wanted to give you a quick overview this evening.
Mr. President, may I add a comment? One, one additional comment on this is the Board's going to receive the actual organizational chart that will show you some of the, the higher level moves. For instance, right now, our campuses are being supervised by four different individuals. And this will streamline it so that all elementaries will be supervised by Dr. Rayleigh Self and all of the secondary campuses by Michael Collinbach. So we'll have a little bit tighter control and a little more accountability there to help us with that. And we feel like we'll be, we'll be able to be more consistent with our approach and more responsive to the principal's needs. So that's a bit of it, but, and there's more to that. But we'll provide that graphic for you as well.
Any board questions for Dr. Gomez? Thank you for y'all's work on this. I know this has been a process. And I do appreciate the fact that we will have a math instructional coach able to help all math teachers at every campus, not just a final, or a language arts instructional coach at one campus. Not oversee, not really being able to be as helpful maybe to those math teachers and vice versa. So I, I think that this is great. So thank you for y'all's work on this. I know it's been a labor of love for many of you in the room, so thank you.
It's been the work of many, as you said, not all of them in the room, but several out of the room. And it will be a team effort that will require a lot of communication protocols. But you have a lot of dedicated individuals behind the, behind us for the academic success of our students.
So we will move forward with our agenda. Thank you, Dr. Gomez. All right, so consent items. We'll have our donations. Let me get to the right page. Let me get me caught up. We'll do our consent items. One will be considered donations. A lot of that's for the DEF Olympics this time around. Dr. LaMasters did an excellent job of getting donations for that to be done at Lone Star. We'll have our bills, accounts, and financial statements. That will be regular. Let's go ahead and hear about our bids for child nutrition for the bakery products. I think you have two, don't you? Yes.
You have two.
We'll do both of yours this evening and maybe we make that as consent for next week.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for allowing us to come today. Our first one up for consent is the bakery bid. And so we did see a little bit of increase in this bid from last year's award to this year's. So the total increase on that was $12,000. So the total increase on that was, um, twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, and that's just part of the increases that we're seeing across the board in our food increases, but I will say that the bakery bid was one of those that held firm in extension. So we just came out of a three-year extension on this bakery bid, and this is the first time we've had to rebid it, and they did hold prices firm for three years. So that price increase was expected, um, and it is, it is, um, already in the budget for that as well. So any questions on the bakery bid?
Is this a three-year bid as well? It looks like a one-
Yes, it will be a, um, so it would be awarded this year with the option of three extensions, so it's, it can be up to total of four, four years on that as well. And it is very, we did only have one formal bid that came in, we had several no bids. It's, that's very common for this bid as well because it is fresh bakery products that have to be delivered directly to campuses, so all twenty-one campuses next year instead of twenty-four, but it does kind of narrow the market down to which companies are available to be able to make those direct delivery stops weekly so that we can have fresh, fresh bread instead of frozen bread. So this is fresh bread products.
All right, any questions regarding bakery bids? Is everyone okay with that being a consent? Okay, so we'll move that to consent. Yes, yeah. All right, let's go ahead and hear about our delivery produce and high-volume items.
Okay, so our direct delivery bid is, um, our bid for our high-volume produce, and, um, a lot of it is our smart snack items, um, you see like the chips that we sell on our snack bars are on there, so it's very high-volume use throughout the week, and so, um, because we have limited space in our warehouse, these are the items that get directly delivered to all twenty-one campuses next year as well. And so, uh, we had two bidders. Unfortunately, this is one of those, uh, it's not unfortunately, but this is one of those bids that's an all-or-none award because it does, the vendor does have to be able to deliver all items to all twenty-one campuses, and one of the vendors, uh, was not able to provide those services to all, all the, all the items to all twenty-one campuses. Um, so, um, the recommendation is for the award to go to Cisco, West Texas, in the amount of one million one hundred and seventeen dollars, four hundred, four hundred and forty-two and thirty-eight cents. Um, I will note that that is a decrease from our award last year, and the reason for that is, um, when I was working on this bid, I just kind of tightened down on the forecasting and had Cisco send me some reports and really narrowed down what items we wanted to offer next year and, the, based on popularity and cost and ensuring that we were not, um, being wasteful with our funds in, in that way. So we were still able to keep our high-quality items, but really narrowed that down, so I actually have that figure for you. Keep my papers from falling off here. And so the bid that we awarded, um, this bid last year for one million eight hundred and forty-five dollars, six hundred and nine ninety-three cents. So that's a decrease of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and some change, so, um, just by kind of narrowing down, uh, what we're gonna be offering next year, but still keeping all the student favorites, so.
Perfect, thank you. Is this a one-year bid, would bid this every year?
We did, we did-
Are there any extensions on it?
It does have the option for a one-year extension, and we did exercise that last year, um, but I found that it was, uh, kind of cumbersome to do an extension on this bid actually, because so many of the prices do change, um, since especially produce, they ha, it has a tendency to fluctuate between one point five and four percent, um, from year to year. It's one of our most expensive pieces, and so, um, we generally, um, just go ahead and issue this out every year.
All right, well, I think that's, I'm okay with consent. Is everyone else okay with consent on that? Perfect. All right, next we have-
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Um, next we have Consider Bid Twenty-four dash zero zero seven, Bond Planning Services.
During our most recent facility assessment, future needs and projects were identified. To fund these projects, the school district will need to pass a bond. This proposal was prepared to hire a marketing firm to assist in the commu, in communicating the district's future plans and all as, aspects of a successful bond campaign. This is just a placeholder, this bid actually opens tomorrow, uh, at three o'clock, and right, as of right now, at five-thirty, we had one bid in the, uh, in the basket in there, so we're hoping for a couple more, but we will score these this week and have a recommendation to you in Friday fax.
Uh, so we'll keep that as a regular.
Thank you.
Um, then, item L, which is Consider RFQ for our annual financial audit.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, board members, an annual financial audit is a requirement for the Texas Public School Districts as contained in the Texas Education Agency Financial Accountability System Resource Guide, which is authoritative document adopted by reference as a rule by the State Board of Education. Uh, we were fortunate, we had four, uh, audit firms, uh, turn in, um, proposals, uh, after we, um, Hope Flores, Jaime Guero, Jason Henry, Bryley, Nehus, and myself, uh, sat and went through the rubric, uh, for each one. Um, our recommendation is to stay with Eid Bailey, uh, we're very pleased with their service. Uh, we went through several different categories, qualification, schedule of fees, experience, um, other school districts, uh, that they service. High-quality group, I mean, all four companies, uh, do great work. Uh, there was, uh, in our mind, uh, some separation in the, in the amount of hours serviced by the senior partners, uh, within the accounting firm, um, where some of the others were either junior partners or, um, you know, other accountants, uh, doing, doing the work. So, uh, we feel confident in that recommendation, um, of Eid Bailey and feel like that could even be on the consent agenda, um, unless there are questions, uh, to have that on the twenty.
So, only question, so this would be for sixty-seven thousand dollars next year, um, is that locked in for the four, that same fee for the next four years, or is?
Uh, there, the schedule of fees is, goes up slightly over those years, it's like a two, two or three thousand dollar increment. Uh, all of those were similar. Uh, of the four companies, Eid Bailey was not the lowest, but was the second lowest. Two higher, one lower. The one lower was only two thousand dollars lower, uh, in the schedule of fees.
And what did we pay Eid Bailey this past year?
Sixty-five.
Thank you. Um, we're staying with the same firm, I'm okay with consent if everyone else is. Okay, consent it is. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. All right, so then we have a proposed, uh, amendment to the district official budget. Dr. Brandon, you have anything you need? That actual, is that the ones that were in the financial audit just here separately?
The budget amendment?
Uh-huh.
Those are all-
The same ones that were-
Function with no change within general fund. Those ones you talked about in the-
But those are the ones, those are the ones from financial, the, the budget ones that we did in our financial audit today?
Over.
No.
Separate from the financial one.
No, sorry, not financial, finance and overview from earlier, this, those are the exact same ones? They're just labeled, they're tw, okay. Okay, so we'll make that consent. Sorry, there was nothing, there was nothing-
Nothing attached.
There was nothing attached in this section, so I was just making sure it was the same ones we had already discussed. Okay, so we'll make that consent. Um, so then, next we have our, um, superintendent's recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five teachers and other professional contracts. Skelton, you-
We got a full list of our-
Okay, they will be on our, in our Friday fax or at our desk next week or in the agenda next week. Okay, so we'll make that consent, um, and if we need to pull that, if anyone has someone we need to pull from that, we'll make the, go from there. Uh, item O, we're gonna cut from the agenda, we no longer need to deal with that. Um, so we'll go in, we'll talk, do announcements, and then we'll, we need to go into closed session for a moment.
Yes.
Um, so one, our finance and pre-agenda workshop, we're gonna move from June tenth to June third. Um, talk to everyone and Mrs. Royal, I talked to her this morning, and she's okay with that as well. Um, we'll keep our regular board meeting on June seventeenth, and then we'll have Team of Eight training on June twenty-fourth, and we will send calendar invites on all of those and switch that on everyone's calendar for everybody. Um, with that, we are going to go into closed session on personnel, uh, items, it'll be five-five-one point zero seven four Personnel Matters, and we will be right back. All right, we have returned from executive session, we took no votes, there, took no action, and meeting is adjourned.